Thank you. So we're gonna, we're gonna try this again. So to ensure public participation was available via teleconferencing, the decision was made last night to continue the meeting, the regular meeting from March 28th to tonight. I'm going to have the clerk do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Landrum?
Here.
And Mayor Wixson?
Here. And Councilmember Ford and Landrum are away on city business this evening attending, I'm sorry, Edwards. Edwards are attending a workshop for the planning, planning and building down in Los Angeles. So they are with us via Zoom. So we're going to begin where we left off last night, which was the opportunity for those watching the meeting via Zoom or call to provide general public comment, and then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. If you're planning on providing public com, if you were planning on providing public comment last night via Zoom or call in, or in person now, then you would have the opportunity to do public comments since we are continuing general public comment from last night. Of course, if you already spoke, we would ask that you would refrain at this time. And, and I was also reminded last night, I'm just really quick before we move on to the, those in the queue is that the last couple of meetings we've had have been obviously a little crazy. One of them was canceled because of the floods and then we were zooming for a special meeting and then last night, tonight. And so I would be remiss if I don't introduce or reintroduce our interim city manager, Greg Carpenter. There were members last night who said they had not had an opportunity to have you introduced to our community. So we thank you for being here and appreciate you stepping in in the middle of all the storms and everything. So thank you and for sharing the drone video. I've already heard real positive feedback from that from last night. So that was good. So thank you and welcome. We appreciate you being here. So we're going to move to those AGP that are in the queue for public comment, please.
Haley, you can unmute and begin.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, hello, County Council and Mayor Wixson. My name is Haley Goodman. I have submitted some materials to you over email. I'm from Dimension Renewable Energy and I am here to introduce a new state program that is Assembly Bill 2316 introduced by Ward and it's colloquially called the Community Solar Plus Storage Program. This is a new program in California with the goal of expanding renewable energy access to folks who usually cannot access it. So that includes people who live in apartments where they rent, folks who don't have the capital to put solar panels on their own roofs, or if they don't own their home, as well as low to moderate income populations. So through the program, solar developers in California can build large scale solar projects that folks can subscribe to and then be benefiting from renewable energy as well as receiving a discount on their utility bill and electricity costs. So this is a great new program that has been really successful elsewhere in the country. And since California has so much capacity for solar, we're really excited about it coming here and hoping it is implemented quickly by the CPUC and gathering support from communities throughout California as well as nonprofits to spread the word about community solar and the benefits it can bring to residents as well as gather support to make sure that it's implemented efficiently and equitably by the CPUC. So I'll, I'll stop there because I think I'm probably at three minutes. But yeah, just to, to go over it is really expanding the access to renewable energy and solar power. It's increasing affordability on utility bills. There is also job creation and it's increasing accessibility to low income households to green energy. So thank you so much for listening and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. AGP, anyone else?
Valerie, you can unmute and begin.
Valerie, you should be able to unmute yourself and allow and be able to speak.
Linda, you may unmute and begin.
Good evening. I'm gonna try this once again. I think I was last in the, for last one up in the queue. Once again, my name is Linda Winters and I want to thank Greg Carpenter, introduce myself to him. I am the person that they know as Mobile Home Linda and I do indeed live in one of those mobile home parks that was shown in your videos and it kind of stopped my heart there for a bit of a while. But moving right along, I am staying at home tonight because we have prepared for yet another storm in our mobile home park on Main Street. Are we tired of this rain and mud? Oh, yes. Are we happy to see the sunshine? Oh, yes. Are we grateful for all of the help that we've been receiving from the city, the fire department, the police department, all of the council members and public works? Yes, yes, yes. I don't think there's one of us in this flood zone that can tell you which storm was worse or when these storms actually happened. For me, as I've stated before, I've experienced two floods in 1995 in January and March and two, two and three quarter floods in 2023. And I can tell you from experience that if you don't want to be around a natural disaster, don't get close to Linda Winters. And I would like to be able to close this very short little presentation with wonderful words from my husband Ken, who was with us in 1995. And after we were finally finished cleaning up for the, what seemed like the endless amount of time, his closing statement as we were dusting off the last thing, I never want to see chocolate pudding again. And that's all for you right now. Thank you very much for listening to me and carry on with this really bizarre city council meeting. Thank you.
Valerie, you should be able to unmute yourself. Dawn Beadle?
My name is Dawn Beadle and I live in Northmore Bay. I wanted to compliment the speakers who spoke before me yesterday. It's like having extra eyes to look into the many issues you, the council, need to stand up about. I would like these folks, however, to ensure they have accurate information before, before throwing swords at all the people that they get mad at. Many of yesterday's speakers had inaccurate information. And so again, I'll repeat myself. I would like to ensure people get accurate information before getting angry. And also welcome Greg. That's all for now.
Thank you. No more hands in the queue. Thank you. So if there's anyone who did not have an opportunity last night to participate in public comment for general public comment before we move on to the consent agenda now would be the time. And the city clerk does have a timer.
Thanks, Mayor, City Council. Yeah, I missed last night. We tried to watch it from home but couldn't hear a thing. So tonight, it's nice to have it down here. It's been a while since we had a meeting at the community center. But the one other thing I wanted to mention, used to be a bronze dedication plaque in the lobby and it's gone. I'd like to know what happened to it. The other thing is that City Hall used to have the portraits, all the mayors and all the councilors going back 58 years and they're gone too. It'd be nice to return these historic things of the city back to their place, or at least here maybe. The other thing is the continuing construction of the water reclamation project. The pipeline project in particular started in December 2020, was given 435 days to complete. Today is 835 days of that, of that contract or something seriously wrong here. And somehow or another, it just seems to has no end to it. And there's obviously, there's a lot of things that still haven't been done. So I'd like to know what is going to be done about finishing that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. With that, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Okay, we'll try one more time.
Valerie, you should be able to speak now.
Actually, I don't really want to, to speak. I'm trying to manipulate my, my phone here to, to silence it, unmute it. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Okay, with that, we will bring it back to council. Thank you for the questions. Thank you for the comments and for last night's also. And I do believe AGP is working on providing a copy of the, the video from last night that should be up online also, so we can catch up with that. So with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda and we will open public comment for items on tonight's consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Terry Simons, Moro Bay. Not knowing what items are going to be polled, I consolidated all my comments and I'll just go down through them. As to A3, I had a question of why has this action come so late in the process, the end of the process rather than at the beginning? The, I read, my read on the conditions of approval in, seem to indicate that the map consolidation was supposed to be done prior to building permits, but the building is complete. So this seems to be trailing and I don't quite understand why. As to A6, that's conflict of interest. I, I have requested the PFPC documents from the city. I recognize that the challenges of the last few weeks have delayed a lot of processes, but hopefully those will be available at some point for public review. And then that's all I have on, on consent. I'll be back for business item C1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Winholtz, I wanted to speak to A5, which I think is a lovely thing. It's the PG&E contract with the city for helping people when their electricity goes off so they can be plugged in. But I want to say I've never heard of this before and it's a renewal. So I'm just going to encourage the city to somehow get out the word better or in a different way to let people know that that service is available. And then just in reference to A6 as well, the conflict of interest statement, it was, I guess, not the word gratifying, but welcoming to know that it's not just you elected officials that are responsible to us, but also the contractors that you hire. And we'll look forward to that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on the consent? With that, I will close public, oh, excuse me, AGP, do we have anyone in the queue? Thank you. With that, I will close public comment on the consent agenda. And I will, the fire chief is here and I'm guessing there's probably an opportunity to post that notice on the fire department website for information on utilizing that A5, that opportunity? Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Sure.
Good evening. So to clarify on this, this agreement is for when PG&E shuts off the power due to fire safety. It is not a resource that'll be set up during unintended power outages. This is for planned power outages when they're shutting off due to red flag fire weather. And then they would pre-stage equipment for that. They don't have an agreement in place for unplanned power outages, just to clarify that.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. That helps. So with that, I will ask council if there is any consent agenda items that anyone wants to poll tonight.
None for me.
Councilmember Landrum or Councilmember Edwards? Anything to poll?
Well, for me. No.
No, that was a no. Okay, with that, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda items A1 through A9.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda, items A1 through A9.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixson?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to our public hearing items. And the first item, B1, will be adopt final funding recommendations for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG money. And I will turn that over to Community Development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wixson. Cindy Jason, I've seen your planner will present the item.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I do have a short presentation for you tonight. So yes, this item is to review the fine, review and make final funding recommendations for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program. Next slide, please. So CDBG or the Community Development Program is federal funding that's received annually from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city receives this money due to its participation with the county and along with most other cities in the county as a member of the urban county consortium and it allows for annual federal entitlement funding. This is a federal program, provides grants to communities that support housing, infrastructure, public services, and also economic development. The city's funding allocation for this year is $52,383. In addition, there is $37,000 approximately of rollover funding from the 2022 program year. The annual application process, and I've included in the PowerPoint here, just a little, a brief summary of what this funding process looks like every year. It's the items before the council today because as part of the community input process, there are two required public hearings that are held every year. So tonight is the second of the two public hearings and this process, as you can see on the slide, it starts with the Notice of Funding Availability that is released every fall. This funding year that we're in right now was released in September. And that's followed by needs assessment workshops held by the county, which seek to identify needs and priorities. It, once applications are submitted, it results in the development of an annual action plan that is updated, or that is put together every year as part of a five-year consolidated plan the county has and is required by federal regulation for community input and meeting certain federal requirements. The, well, the last bullet, what I was gonna say is the last bullet showed the date of the draft funding recommendation. So your council approved the draft funding recommendation at its meeting on December 13th. Those funding recommendations were forwarded to the County Board of Supervisors. And I pretty much already said this first bullet here on the slide, but that includes all of those funding recommendations. During this process in between draft and final funding recommendations, additional public comment input is solicited. Thus, the public hearing that we're holding tonight take public input. The County Board of Supervisors will hold an additional public hearing to consider all of the city's inputs along with public feedback and input. And that meeting this year will be held on April 18th. They are also currently seeking public comment, which is open through April 15th. In regards to the city's applications received, we received two applications and those were received under the Public Services and Public Facilities categories. And next slide. On the screen, this is a repeat of the slide that you saw at your December meeting. Those two funding applications were from the Five Cities Homeless Coalition for $3,500 and that is a program that provides funding assistance for their rapid rehousing and homeless prevention program. They provide services countywide. Their total application that they submitted to all cities and the county was in excess of 90,000. They were only requesting 3,500 to the city of Moro Bay based on the amount of benefit to city residents. Our, our town is smaller than some of the other cities in the county. The second application is a public services facility, excuse me, public facilities application. And that is an application that we received from the Public Works Department. This actually, as I said this at the December meeting, it's a really interesting application because we received a request from a member of the public who is visually impaired and they requested that there be ADA accessibility upgrades to this intersection in town. So this would actually provide an accessible crossing for visually impaired persons. And also improve sidewalk connections and pedestrian accessibility. And then the third row on the screen is the Federal Allowed Administration for Staff Time. That amount of 3,600 is what pays for city staff time. The majority of the administration of the federal grant is done by the county and that's reflected in your staff report. Next slide. So staff's recommendation then is to fund the request by Five Cities Homeless Coalition, the Public Works ADA Upgrade Project and City Administration of 3,667, utilizing both the 22 rollover allocation funding along with the 2023 funding allocation for a total recommendation of 89,860. And then additionally authorize the city manager to make per rata adjustments based on our final congressional action for the 2023 year. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Questions?
All right. Thank you, Cindy. I have a question. I, it's not necessarily about this particular item, but I have a question regarding our, our policy and our approach to ADA compliance for intersections beyond the one that we're wanting to repair. Just like looking forward, how do, do we wait for a complaint or an incident to happen or? I mean, in this case, it sounds like it was requested. But I'm just kind of thinking about all of our intersections and I know it takes a lot of funding, so obviously we can't just do that right now. It's not like a quick fix, but what is our approach to making sure that we're as compliant as we can be?
So I believe that a few years ago, the city did an accessibility plan that was spearheaded by the Public Works Department. I, I guess I would ask the Public Works Director if I am correct in that and if, provide more information. But before you answer, I do want to say with, with this funding application for CDBG, because of the city's limited resources initially when we received the request, it was not something that we had anticipated we would be able to meet. And luckily, we were able to identify that there was this untapped CDBG funding that could meet this goal. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Director Qualick.
Thank you, Cindy, and thank you, Councilmember Ford, for the question. Yeah, so the city does have an ADA transition plan where we identify deficiencies around the city and our facilities and along our sidewalks. And we have plans for what upgrades need to be made to meet current ADA standards and timelines for those upgrades. And so we typically don't have funding in our limited capital budget as Cindy mentioned to do these sorts of upgrades. So we try to fill in when we can. I, I would say then the past year, you know, we've, we have planned expenditures of over a million dollars, all grant funds. And largely that pays for ADA improvements. So I'm thinking of the Transit Hub project, which a large portion of that project is going to ADA improvements and then this project as well, for which we received $490,000 from a slow cog community betterment's grants in addition to the $75,000 or so coming out of CDBG.
Yeah, thank you both. Appreciate that. That's the only question that I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards? Any questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Landrum? Questions?
Sorry, hold on. I appreciate what Mr. Qualick just said. I was just wondering where we could get that schedule of, of the project.
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Landrum. I can certainly get you the transition plan. I wouldn't call it a schedule because we are limited in our ability to implement these projects by our constrained funding. So it's more of, you know, we, we have a plan to get a number of projects done by a certain time. You know, we can always amend that plan, but actual implementation is always dependent upon available funding.
Is that something that's available on the website or how would, how would we view that?
I would have to double check that, but I can certainly send it to the city council if it's not on the website.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no questions, I will turn it over to public comment or item B1.
Thank you, Betty Winholtz. I did send an email and it was more in terms of where do we go doing this process next time?
Pardon me, Ms. Winholtz. Mayor, I think we need to open the public hearing and then open public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Open the public hearing. Thank you. And public comment. Sorry.
No problem. So my, my request is that we look at how we approach this next year when we get more CBGG money in terms of how we let the public know so they can have input into what projects are chosen. Though staff, I'm sure, has a arms-length list of things they would like. There might be other items that the public would like to insert for possibilities. And then I just have one, and not that it needs to be a question, but I think that our city goes in with the county to get this money and I think that Grover receives its money separately from the county. And I, I'm curious if they get more money because they're isolated and if the county has to split up the pot of money they have and so we get less. So my question is not necessarily for now, but if they need to research it, would it be advisable for us to get more money if we weren't with the county? be advisable for us to get more money if we weren't with the county and we could do our own thing? Or do we get more money if we are with the county? Thank you.
Thank you.
Devin McQuaid? If you want to unmute now?
Hi there. This is Devin McQuaid. I'm the Associate Director with the Five Cities Homeless Coalition. I just wanted to come on tonight to thank staff for their recommendation for the CDBG funds for public service and the council for their consideration. I just wanted to reiterate, I think Cindy hit all the points there, but our housing programs do provide services countywide. We do this in an effort so that we can maximize our resources throughout the county and prevent duplication of benefits. So we receive furls all the way from San Miguel, Cambria, Morro Bay, all the way down to Nipomo. And as Cindy also mentioned, we do always make these requests in proportion to the households that we anticipate serving in each jurisdiction. So we are currently serving seven households in the City of Morro Bay, three with our homeless prevention program, subsistence payments for rental assistance, and four with our rapid rehousing program. So those who were previously homeless, getting back into housing for the first time. And just a scope of kind of how these funds assist, it goes all the way from somebody who may have been homeless for, you know, 15 years, living in a tent, moving back into housing, or in a case most recently, that was actually a Morro Bay resident of 12 years, they lost their spouse, who was the main earner in the household. They were actually able to use these subsistence funds to assist with rental payments, get that person a voucher so that they were able to stay in their home. So again, we just want to thank staff for their recommendation. You know, little funds can go a long way, and we're grateful for the continued support from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to address? No. Oh, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? Any more hands in the queue? Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment for this public hearing item and bring it back to council for comments.
I just, I want to say that I appreciate the two, I think it's great that we're supporting the two items that we're supporting with these funds. The, I think it's, I really wish we could fix all of the problems that we have in our city with, to be ADA compliant. I know it's important to be as accessible to visitors and locals here in Morro Bay, but if we can at least do one project at a time, and this is an exciting opportunity and probably rare. So I just want to say that I definitely support this, the funding that we're recommended. Oh, and one more thing. One more thing. I've known a couple of individuals here in Morro Bay as well, who have utilized the services of Five Cities Homeless Coalition. And I just want to say that I think it's such a great organization. When I originally had someone come to me and ask me, they said, I don't think I'm going to be able to make rent. I'm stressing out. I have a family. And I asked around my, you know, resources within our county, and everybody said Five Cities Homeless Coalition is the place to go, and they're a very welcoming, wonderful organization. And so I'm proud to support their organization.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton?
The comment that I wanted to make is that when you are a small, a small city, you're dealing with very small amounts of money, and to be able to team up with some other organizations around the county makes a huge difference. It's, it's just, having worked in CDBG years ago in a bigger city, the numbers are quite small, and so it behooves us to play well with others, to stretch that money as far as possible. So I'm glad that we do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum? Comments?
I just want to say that I appreciate the speaker from the Five Cities. I don't have my agenda here, so I don't the whole name, but I really appreciate the information and knowing more of where that money is going.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, I just wanted to add what Councilmember Landrum just said. We really appreciate Devin McQuaid giving us a call in here to let us know how many homes that have been helped. And just really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just share in recognizing the comments made, you know, by our speaker, we always want to see the opportunities for benefits here in Morro Bay, but we do have a small amount, and recognizing the need regionally, how that plays into our residents here as well. So it is not a whole lot that we could do with that money. And hopefully, before it comes forward next year, when we have the first reading, maybe there'll be some community input that we can use with that. So I appreciate that. With that, I think there's no questions. Thank you for the presentation very much. I appreciate it and all your work on that. And I will ask for, we'll close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion for this resolution.
I'll move that we adopt item B1.
Do you need a reading? For the resolution or not?
Review and adopt the final funding recommendations for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards. With that, we have a motion and a second.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. There was actually more than one recommendation. There's also authorization for city manager, city manager to make prorata adjustments. It's okay with this item to just approve the recommendation in its entirety, B1's recommendation.
Okay. But we did.
Oh, I was reading this part, not this part. Sorry. Okay. Did you want me to say it again?
You want to amend the, should I amend the motion then? Please.
Okay. So staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing. Let's see, we did that part, right? So, and adopt resolution number 1223, approving final funding recommendations for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Funds and forward recommendations to the San Luis Obispo County Board of Supervisors for inclusion with other final funding requests from the Urban County Consortium. The funding recommendation is for the two applications received from Five Cities Homeless Coalition and the City Public Works Department, along with City Program Administration of $3,667 for a total 2023 funding allocation of $89,860. Additionally, staff recommends that city council authorize the city manager to make prorata adjustments to the allocation based on the final funding amount from San Luis Obispo County, based on the approval of the federal budget and HUD's final grant amount to the county.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. That was a lot. Councilmember Edwards, can you jump in there on that second and restate your second on that, please?
Yes, I second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Sorry about that, you guys. With that, we will move on to our business item, C1, Presentation and Discussion of the Fiscal Year 2122 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report from our Admin Service Department, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Get used to this new mic here. So as you mentioned, this is our presentation of both our annual comprehensive financial report, which we now refer to as our ACFER, as well as our third-party audit. So this report is looking back. It provides a snapshot of the city's financial status as of June 30th, 2022, and it complies with both GAAP and GASB standards, which stands for Generally Acceptable Accounting Principles, and Governmental Accounting Board Standards. And I want to mention that I'll just be giving a brief intro and then turning it over to our third-party auditor, who's on Zoom. And I want to thank her for being available on the 14th, and the 28th, and now the 29th. The third-party audit is an important function that the city undergoes every year, and Brown Armstrong is our current auditor. We have a five-year agreement with them, and this is their second year auditing our books. She'll describe a bit in more detail the auditor's role, but it's essentially to ensure that an objective party is reviewing all of our major financial reports, our internal controls processes, ensuring that there's no potential for fraud. And so it's a critical function. So this year, this report provides good news on a few fronts. First, this is a clean audit with no findings, which means that there were no detected deficiencies in internal controls or financial reporting. And we are very happy about that. And then second, this report indicates that the city's financial position overall improved from the prior fiscal year. There are a few ways that that's measured and demonstrated in the ACFER. First, the city's net position increased. And net position is defined as the difference between the city's assets and liabilities, including all of our long-term assets and long-term liabilities. So that includes things like our capital assets, like the building we're in, and long-term liabilities, like our pension liability. So the net position is not necessarily our available cash on hand. It's a measurement of our assets minus our liabilities. The improvement of that does demonstrate, you know, an improvement in the city's fiscal position in that regard. And then a more relevant to our upcoming budget process is that the city's fund balance has also increased. Fund balance is the difference between revenues and expenditures, and it's reported, and basically how this year's difference between revenue and expenditures connects to the prior year's fund balance, and the change in fund balance is reported for governmental funds in the annual comprehensive financial report. So this year, for all of our governmental funds collectively, the fund balance has increased by about 7.7 million. And I'll just highlight a few. These numbers are also highlighted in the Management's Discussion and Analysis section of the ACFER, which is kind of the executive summary, and it highlights the key trends that are really important about this more lengthy document. So the general fund balance increased by approximately $4.7 million. The Measure E fund balance increased by just over half a million dollars. And then all of our other non-major governmental funds increased collectively by about $2.7 million. That's good news, because we are going into, as we'll talk about through our budget process, a bit of a more uncertain time for our revenues. And so it's just, it's great that the city was able to come out of COVID and recover and have significant gains during 2122. We did end fiscal year 2122 with a general fund emergency reserve balance that actually exceeded the 50% target. And since then, at mid-year in February, council appropriated some of those general fund emergency reserves for storm recovery, and that's something that's ongoing, and we're going to continue to be talking about that and budget development as well. But we were starting from a very, a very strong position. So that's, that's very helpful. And then finally, I wanted to highlight that the city's pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities decreased according to governmental accounting standards. And so there is some accounting nuance there. On the pension side, all of the pension figures that are presented in the ACFER are based on CalPERS' GASB 68 valuations, which is how they are required to present it according to the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Those numbers are different than the numbers that CalPERS uses for our valuations that determine our annual contribution requirements. And so we'll be talking about the numbers that actually inform our funding requirements through the budget process. I do want to mention that there is a typo in the staff report on page 75 of the packet regarding the pension liability amount. However, the numbers in the ACFER are all correct throughout, and so that reflects a pension liability reduction of approximately 11.2 million from the prior year. That is also a blip in time, and it reflects CalPERS' positive returns for the prior fiscal year. We know since then that they actually lost money in the subsequent fiscal year and are projected to have probably pretty flat, if any, gains this fiscal year. So while our liability decreased momentarily, we know that it's going to increase again in the subsequent valuation year. Do you want me to pause, Mayor? Are you? Okay. I just, I'm feeling bad for you over there. Okay. And so I think that hits all the high points I wanted to mention, although certainly available for questions after you hear from our auditor. Before handing it over to her, I do want to thank our finance manager, Emily Conrad. She's our lead on this effort and this report with contributions from the whole finance team. And so thank you, Emily, for all of your work on this. And I will turn it over to Lindsay Zimmerman, who is a partner with Brown Armstrong, our third-party auditor. And she should be on Zoom as a panelist.
Great. Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Mayor, and council members. Just wanted to say thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules for me to present the audit results for the city. So I'd like to start off by just saying thank you to the team. Emily and Sarah and their team were fantastic. Last year was the first year that we got through together, and this last year has been, was fantastic. So we were able to work through a lot of issues, and it went a lot smoother, and we were all on the same page. And so this last audit was great. So I just wanted to say thank you all to the team to start off. And just wanted to say thank you all as well for allowing me to present the audit results. And then for the agenda, I will go over the scope of services that we provide. I'll go over the audit purpose, our responsibilities, timelines. I will also go over some audit areas of focus. Sarah already went over a lot of the annual comprehensive financial overview, so I won't touch on that too much. Same with the highlights. And then at the end, I will present the audit results. So for our scope of services, we are hired to audit the city's financial statements in accordance with U.S. Generally Accepted Auditing Standards. And also because it's city municipality, we also audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards. And then for required communication, we have what we call a SAS 114, or Required Communication Letter to You. And then also, we, in addition to making sure that the annual comprehensive financial report is accurate, we also look into detail on the internal controls over financial reporting, over compliance and other matters in accordance with GAS, which is the governmental auditing standards. And just to touch on, on a high level of the, all of the areas that we touch on as part of our audit, we audit in detail of different ways within accordance with detailed testing, analytics, confirmations, so on and so forth, so many detailed areas of testing. We touched on 373 million in citywide assets and deferred outflows of resources. We also looked at 181 million in citywide liabilities and deferred inflows of resources. We also looked at in detail 48.5 million in citywide revenues, and also 32.3 million in citywide expenses. And also, in addition to all of the detailed testing on the government-wide, we looked at, spread out our testing across all 27 funds. So we looked at all the funds in detail. And for, I know we have some new council members, so for the purpose of an audit is we are to provide an independent and objective assessment of the stewardship of the government's funds. We are also independent, and we carefully examine and audit the books, records, accounts, and funds, like I discussed in the last slide. And audits are essential to government accountability to the public. And to touch on the difference between our responsibility and management's responsibility, management is actually responsible for the financial statements and presenting them in accordance with the government's accounting standards and accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. They are also responsible for proper accounting policies and adopting them and implementing them each year. So GASB is always busy and keeping everyone on our toes. So. So happy to report that was done properly this year. They are also responsible for establishing and maintaining the effectiveness of internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, and also to prevent and detect fraud. And some things I've already touched on before, but our responsibilities are to perform the audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the U.S. of A and the government auditing standards. We also, as what we're doing today, I'm required to communicate to you as those charged with governance. We also take a risk-based approach, and we look at the risk of the internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. And as we can't test every single item, as you've noticed on the slides before, there's so many transactions that happen. We look at the internal control processes in detail to make sure that they're designed properly and operating effectively. We also look at the fairness of the presentation of the financials as a whole. You'll notice the Act for is quite large, so we make sure that all the components are all connecting and all matching up. And then at the end of our audit, we issue our opinions and the required communication letters. And one of the areas that we have to communicate to you are what we have deemed to be significant audit risks, which one is revenue recognition in terms of making sure that the revenue has been properly reported for the city. We looked at, and our response to those significant risk areas is that we looked in detail of the tests of controls surrounding those cash receipts, all the way from receiving the cash, receiving the receipts, all the way through reconciliation and reporting. We also performed substantive analytics to make sure year over year that the cash receipts and the revenue appears reasonable and has been recorded properly. And then one area that we also have deemed to be a significant audit risk is the management override of controls. And happy to report throughout all of our detailed journal entry testing, inquiries about the financial reporting process, we performed all of those significant walkthroughs of the significant areas and deemed that there is the right amount of segregation of duties and the right reconciliations are occurring. And then to the meat of my presentation, I'd like to present, as Sarah has mentioned, we have what's called an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements as a whole. And then in addition, we, as we looked at those internal controls, we noted no non-compliance and no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And then also, this is part of that letter I talked to you about earlier with the SAS 114 required communication. Emily and I and the team worked very diligently on this new GASB or Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 87, which had to deal with leases. And so you'll notice that there's some new presentation for the leases in the Act for this year in that the leases, which used to be just a disclosure in the Act for, is now on the face of the balance sheet or statement of net position. And so that was quite an undergo to make sure that all of those leases were recorded properly and captured with all the calculations and the presentation. So hats off to Emily and her team for going through all that long process. In terms of our significant estimates and sensitive disclosures, we looked at capital assets in detail and the depreciation useful lives. We looked at any allowance for doubtful accounts, to make sure those were properly recorded. And I already touched on the leases and looked at those contracts and the rates that were being used as part of the calculations. And then also, Sarah mentioned earlier about the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability. And those were based on those actuarial assumptions that we looked in detail to make sure that those were properly recorded. And then happy to report, the last five, we had no difficulties with management, no disagreements, no corrected or uncorrected misstatements. We received a management representation letter stating those management responsibilities early on, that it's management's responsibility to present the financials in accordance with GAAP and GAS. And we, as independent auditors, come in and issue an independent report. And then happy to report, we didn't have any other audit findings or issues. And that's all I've got for you. So it's nice whenever there's no issues or findings, the presentation goes pretty quick. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Lindsay. Appreciate that. Ms. Zimmerman, anything else that you wanted to add? Okay, with that, I will open up council questions. Councilmember Barton?
Well, I'd like to say also that it's certainly a relief and a a nice spot to be in, to have a clean audit. I'm curious about the thing that you just mentioned, about the new way of showing leases in the document.
Yes, so in the past, for instance, a lease, let's just say a building lease, if it was, it used to be called a an operating lease, in that the terms of the lease, when it went out, say, 30 years, would only be a disclosure in the notes. And so now with the new GASB 87, they had to, the management had to take the present value of all of those lease payments and calculate out what the total liability and/or receivable would have been in order to receive that funding for the lease, the building lease receivable that the city has, is the named lesser. And so the lease receivable, let's say it's now, you know, for all 30 years, it's $5 million. And there's a calculation to get down to that being presented on the statement of net position or balance sheet. There'll be like 4.9, whatever, you know, present value, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but present value of money. And then in addition, there's what's called a deferred inflow of resources that whenever the lease payments now come in, that revenue will get recognized instead of, and that will reduce the receivable and the deferred inflow. So it's now, it's just basically a big gross up on the balance sheet. So instead of just a note, so just more full disclosure on what the city will be receiving as a lease receivable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had that question too, trying to understand that. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I just have a general question. How, in your experience, how often is it that you get this clean of an audit?
Well, last year was a little different. So we worked through a lot of things last year. You know, in terms of, since it's the second year, a lot of times, if management's very willing and to work with us and make sure we meet in the middle, the second year is usually a lot better. But first years, I usually get quite a few findings. So it kind of just depends. I would say right now, maybe 50/50 with findings and no findings. So yeah, it's great to get a clean opinion and no findings.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Edwards, questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Really appreciate the report. And it's wonderful to hear about the clean audit and appreciate all of the work the staff has done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Landrum.
I don't have any questions. Councilmember Barton asked for me.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I will open public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Teri Simons, Morro Bay. I have to admire the diligence that people who work in finances and auditing must have to go through. Personally, I spent 10 years as a CFO of a construction development company. And the last thing I would ever want to do in my day was look at audits and financial statements because it's mind-numbing. But thank you so much for what you do. I know it's, has to be done, and it would appear that we're doing things right for the city of Morro Bay. In looking at the attachments that were a part of the staff report, there were several different items that were identified as fiscal year 2122, 2223, 2122. And then the one that caught my eye was the Morro Bay Cayucus Wastewater Treatment Facility Joint Powers Agreement Financial Statements. And interestingly enough, it was backdated clear to 2021. So it's two years behind the times, if you will. I suspect that part of that is a function of the fact that it's reaching the end of its joint powers agreement with the completion of Cayucus' wastewater facility and now the completion of Morro Bay's facility. My question is, when and how, excuse me, when and how will the joint facilities that are owned collectively be divided, separated, segregated, audited, evaluated as to ownership? And when will the negotiations to do that start? The documents that I looked at said that the negotiations to separate the interests of the parties, basically Cayucus Sanitary and Morro Bay, were scheduled to start upon the activation of the Morro Bay facility. It's my understanding that that facility is now active, although the project is not complete. So I don't know what that is involved. But I know that Cayucus unhooked from the, their contribution, if you will, to the waste stream going into the plant some time ago. And we are now processing in the new facility. So my real question is, is when do we start to separate the interests of the parties? And how will that be handled? Will that be handled in an endless series of closed-door meetings? Or will that be done through some semi-public process? Thank you.
Betty Winholtz again. No questions about the audit, but the audit did raise three questions for me that I'd like to ask the council to consider, either now or at some point. And one of those has to do with, if I interpreted this correctly, under expenses, it looked like all the departments, except for finance, was expending between $1 and $3 million for the year. But finance only expended half a million. And I don't know if that's because we're trying to shrink that department or it's because we've done so much outsourcing. But I thought that that was really, it just kind of jumped out at me, that number. And so I was curious about that. Obviously, we all know that Harbor is in trouble in terms of its finances, and I know that we'll be addressing that. And that certainly was obvious in this audit statement as well. And then my final comment is with regard to the wastewater treatment plant, that there seemed to be, and again, if I'm interpreting it correctly, an excess, or I don't know if we call it an excess, but more money collected than anticipated. And so I'm wondering if at some point, the council will consider some of that rebate money from the $41 from the surcharge that was passed under the Prop 2018 in the year 2018. Prop 18 in the year 2018. Yes, Prop 218, thank you. Sorry. So those are my three questions for council. Thank you.
Paul Donnelly again, favorite subject, the water reclamation project. Back in the WRFCAC, the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee, we were told that certain common things being done under construction would be split between the two enterprise funds. 71% of the sewer enterprise fund would pay for some of the things, and 29% of the water enterprise fund would pay for the other part. And so I'm kind of, for instance, I asked at the time, like for the construction of the site, 71, 21, 29 split, the payments to Corolla, for instance, would be done the same way. But then with the EPA gave us our WFIAs loans, and both of those loans were heavy on the water side. 59% of the water reclamation aspect and only 41% towards the sewer. So I was wondering how those disbursements went out to like the contractors, if there was indeed, you know, some sort of split between those two different funds and how they paid and how the WFIAs numbers came into the equation. It seems kind of very complex. I'm sure it is. So just kind of curious. And then now, if that $41, like Betty was saying, my understanding, there's probably a balance that exceeds what we're taking in to meet those obligations to pay those loans. If that's the case, then yeah, we should probably see a rebate. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. No one in the queue? Thank you very much. I will bring it back to council then. Ms. Johnson-Rios, is there anything that you're able to very briefly address with those questions? Thank you.
Sure. I will start with the first one. Negotiations are underway with Cayucus. There's some key documents that are still pending, including a land appraisal. And I think that, if you want to hear more about that, there are others here that could probably speak to that in greater detail. In terms of Ms. Winholtz's questions, we are certainly not shrinking the finance department. In fact, we were fortunate to restore the staffing to pre-COVID levels of staffing. And so I, without looking at the numbers in detail, my understanding is that there's just are fewer expenditures than there are in other departments. But could certainly follow up if there are more specific questions. And in regards to the wastewater treatment plant, I actually just looked at this the other day. We are annually taking in, in the wastewater treatment plant surcharge, an amount that is less than the anticipated debt service for the WRF project. So at this time, based on our current data, there's not a rebate anticipated. However, we're always monitoring the fund status for all of our funds, especially our major funds. So we'll continue to do that for the water and sewer funds.
Thank you for that. And with that, I will turn it over to council comments. So I'm just going to start off real quick. And thank you, Ms. Zimmerman, for the presentation. It was very helpful and complete. And thank you also to our finance department, to Ms. Johnson-Rios and Ms. Conrad. And a big thank you to all the businesses in our city of Morro Bay and our hotels and everybody who definitely provided us with a very healthy boost to our budget that we weren't expecting. So it's nice to see those funds up to the amounts they were. Thank you. With that, I will turn it over. Any comments, council comments?
I'll just basically echo what you said, or I should say, just to repeat. Without going over the entire thing, I just want to say that I'm really proud of our, of our city and our finance department. You guys have been through a lot. And you were short-staffed, and you had a lot to learn, and there was a lot of turnover, and there was just so many things happening. And here we are in the second round, and you got an outstanding audit, a clean audit. And you're, we've improved in our fiscal position. I mean, just everything is positive. And I just want to give you major kudos because I'm just really proud of what you've accomplished. So thank you. And also thank you, Lindsay, for the presentation.
I just want to read a sentence that jumped out at me. This is towards the end of the report, and it says, "Adquate citywide financial management and oversight may also require evaluating staff resources in key operating departments to ensure that there is sufficient knowledge and capacity throughout the organization to facilitate effective financial management in all areas and coordination with centralized finance staff." And I think that's a great, that's a wonderful goal to get to that point.
Thank you. I agree. Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Sarah Johnson, Sarah Johnson-Rios and her staff. Sorry, I'm getting some back audio here. And I also wanted to say how much I And I also wanted to say how much I appreciated her taking time out to meet with me, to try to help me understand much more about accounting and the numbers and where everything comes from. As a new person, it is a lot to digest and a lot to unpack. So again, I just want to say thank you to Sarah and her staff for everything that they've done. And I do want to recognize that, you know, we are in good shape right now, but we also want to recognize that, you know, things are always changing. This, again, is a snapshot, and it's a backwards-looking, you know, report. And, you know, as we're moving forward, trying to figure out, I know I've asked lots of questions about Measure E and Q, and I'm, you know, it's sad that having the emergency disaster, you know, I recognize that we are going to be dipping into some of these things that we built up. And so I guess I'm just kind of that dose of reality right now. But it's, this is a really good report, and I appreciate it all the time. Thank you.
Councilmember Landrum?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And hopefully, to that comment, Councilmember Edwards, I know we've applied for most all the FEMA funding to hopefully receive back the money we've put out. So this is, I believe, a receiving file. Is that correct? Thank you. We will move on. If you will all indulge me, I obviously can't get through a meeting lately, it seems like, without having some sort of change needed. And when we did our consent agenda earlier, I missed an opportunity between last night and tonight, shifting gears. We have a representative here from, we have one item left, and I promise we'll get to it. But if we can give the representative from First Five, San Luis, which was here for a proclamation for the Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, just a few minutes to come up. She's been so patient being here last night and tonight both. And I know it's way out of sync for the schedule, but I hope you'll give me that little bit of leeway, please, and let her have a few minutes to come up real quick before we do our last item. Thank you, everybody. And my apologies. And we will have your proclamation tomorrow for you.
Yes, no worries. I've learned a lot these past two days.
I feel like I held you hostage for two nights now. Thank you.
Hello and good evening. My name is Natalie Renteria, and I'm here representing the San Luis Obispo County Childcare Planning Council. I want to start out by thanking you for the opportunity to celebrate and acknowledge the over 54,000 diverse children that live here in San Luis Obispo County, who are the bright future of our world. Each and every child deserves the chance to live, play, and grow into a strong, resilient, and successful adult. And we thank you for supporting our efforts as you continue to prioritize them within your community. Each year in April, we celebrate Month of the Child and also recognize the Child Abuse Prevention Month. It is a time for us to stop and recognize that each and every one of us plays a vital role in ensuring that children are granted every opportunity to thrive here in San Luis Obispo County. We encourage you to join us this month at the many events that are held throughout the county to celebrate Month of the Child. On Saturday, April 8th, Children's Day in the Plaza will be hosted in San Luis Obispo Mission Plaza. To commemorate Day of the Child, over 50 organizations will come together to offer a day of family fun activities, along with information and resources for families and children. We also hope that you will join us on Friday, April 28th, at the statewide raising of the children's memorial flag here at the downtown courthouse in San Luis Obispo. This flag is a simple symbol of Child Abuse Prevention Month and reminds us that too many children in our world suffer daily from abuse and neglect, and they need and deserve our protection and care. Though we only proclaim April to be Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, our children need us to continue to prioritize them and their needs throughout every month of the year. It is our collective responsibility to demonstrate that the youth of our community are of utmost importance and deserve our commitment of time, money, collaboration, and unified support. I want to thank you again for allowing us this opportunity, and we look forward to another year of continued collaboration and connection. And we hope to see you guys at Children's Day in the Plaza. And a special thank you to Councilmember Jen Ford for being a childcare liaison. And we have a little gift from the children at the Questor College Children's Center. Hopefully, next year, weather permitting, they can come along.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your patience, really. And I'm glad you learned something. I don't know if that's good or bad. Thank you. With that, we will move on to item C2, and this will be input on our City Council Goals discussion for fiscal year 23, 24, 24, 25. And I will turn it over to our interim city manager, Mr. Carpenter.
Yeah, I have the pleasure of making this presentation. The executive team was glad to give me this assignment. So we are going to do a couple of things. We're going to, we're going to talk about progress on the current city goals, and we're going to talk about the public input that we've received in order to help the city team, the executive team, and the council develop next year's strategic plan. Then we're going to lay out the process. So go to the next slide. So yeah, update on current city goals, what we've accomplished in the last 16 months since the council last adopted the strategic plan and work tasks, the input we've received, and then where are we going? What are our next steps? So 2020, in, I think it was November of '21, the city council adopted these five goals on the screen: improving public infrastructure, achieving fiscal sustainability and economic vitality, addressing the city's housing needs, climate action-related goal, and improving community health. And if you recall, we were right in the middle of COVID-19 and responding to the pandemic. So those were the five goal areas. In order to accomplish those goals, the council adopted 36 action items. So the next set of slides is going to go in very summary form through the 39 action items, which ones are complete, which ones are in progress. There's one that has not been started yet. So what we've accomplished in the last 16 months, these 15 action items, reviewing and establishing staffing for the city's maintenance function is complete. Staff was added there. You saw the need to reach out and ask for additional assistance, both in Sacramento and Washington DC. We now have two firms representing the city. I believe they're making a presentation at your next council meeting, progress presentation. Assess the viability for downtown and Barcadero business improvement districts. That initial assessment was done with the chamber. There was some initial interest found. So I think the next step would be to explore that further. Reviewing policy options to address pension liabilities. The city did establish a pension reserve policy that has to do with your year-end fund balance, created a pension trust fund, and then even went further and contributed the first $1 million towards that fund to offset future pension costs. The zoning code update is complete at the city level. It is pending California Coastal Commission certification later this year, because that's a major accomplishment. Updating the Council on State Housing Legislation, that was done. My understanding is there's a lot more state housing legislation that's being discussed, so that there's likely a need to revisit that. The online building permit application and plan check application systems are in place, and we've increased the number of transactions with the city that can be done online. And then finally, we've implemented the state requirement related to organic waste. Other completed actions, promoting the California, the 3CE, the California Central Coast Community Energy Electrification Program. These next three items were accomplished through updates to the city's website with respect to providing that additional information. The council declared a state of climate emergency in February. As far as supporting San Luis Obispo County's public health communication efforts and vaccinating Morro Bay community members, that was done through additional community education and information. Informing the, inform the county process to update the 10-year plan for homelessness. That plan has been approved by the Board of Supervisors. Supporting the Filipino-American group rededication event at Coleman Beach, the city hosted that event. Seeking opportunities for Boys and Girls Club to offer teen services, the council did enter into a five-year agreement to provide teen services, teen center to open in the fall. Let's see. You know, a lot of these items are going to take more than a year to accomplish. So even though the plan was adopted 16 months ago, there are a number of items that are still ongoing and that may, will even go into the next fiscal year. Traffic speed study was an action item. The preliminary results of that study are going to be going to the Public Works Advisory Board next month. Capital needs assessment, as we've budgeted money for that assessment to be done, an RFP will be, will be distributed for that work to be done. Paid parking pilot program, we have worked with a consultant, we've received draft recommendations, pending additional public outreach and city council direction on how we want to proceed with that effort. Pursuing grant opportunities for the Coleman Beach area, one grant was received. We are seeking additional grant opportunities there. A water resource planning strategy will be presented to the city council. Market Plaza development opportunities, there are cities currently under negotiations for a development at that location. Developing impact fee study is something that we need to continue to work on. An RFP will be prepared and released, and we'll be working with the council and the community on potentially revising those fees, updating the, updating the study. The Vistra Battery Project, their application has been received. As you know, the environmental assessment and studies are ongoing, and public hearings could occur either late this year or early next year. Assessing cybersecurity needs, an initial assessment was done. It's really kind of an ongoing task and will continue. Developing stock accessory dwelling unit plan templates, the plans have been developed. They're being modified to be compliant with the current version of the building code and will be available for the public and for use in coming months. This next activity really had a number of sub-acts related to housing and housing policies, implementing the housing element, by right, objective design guidelines, ADU ordinance update with incentives, update to the density bonus and inclusionary housing requirements. Some of those are already done, others are underway and nearly complete. And finally, Seashell Estates Land Use Amendment, that's a zone change, a potential zone change, and a preliminary application has been submitted affecting those properties. And just finishing out this category, reviewing the planning process, a committee's been formed, they're going to begin meeting and looking at the potential for streamlining or improving the planning permit process. Pursue funding to update the climate action plan, we're seeking grant opportunities there. Pursue electric vehicle charging stations, we received some funding. We haven't implemented or used the funds yet, but the intent would be that we do so. Educate the council and staff about diversity, equity, and inclusion issues, that's an ongoing effort. Explore opportunities to support countywide efforts to address homeless issues on the North Coast, that's an ongoing effort. And providing information, resources on access to mental health, resources to address behavior, behavior and mental health crisis, substance abuse issues, depressive illnesses, exacerbation of previously controlled mental health issues is an ongoing effort. We do now have a case manager to work on this issue, as long as, as well as broader homelessness issues, and that's an ongoing effort. And then finally, there's one, one action item that we have not addressed yet. I think it had more to do with an event that was planned that was then canceled and participation there, but there was an action item to designate one week per year to conduct renewable energy outreach campaign. So that's where we stand. A lot accomplished, a lot underway from the last strategic plan. So in preparing for the upcoming strategic plan, we did a number, we did a couple of things to gather information. Our facilitator talked to each of the council members in detail, spoke to city staff. We distributed an online survey with both set questions and responses, but also some open-ended questions. And to date, we've received, I think this is actually a little bit obsolete, over 250 responses to the question about, in response to the question about what people like about living in Morro Bay, where they're generally, areas that they're satisfied with. There are a number of responses, options, but those that were most selected had to do with quality of life in Morro Bay and the services provided by the city, public safety, public spaces, recreation services, utility services, and emergency services. The majority of people were either very satisfied or satisfied in those areas. Three areas where there was sort of a lower score related to satisfaction, economic health of the community, development services processes, mobility roads and sidewalks related to the conditions of those things. As far as where respondents felt the most important areas for the city to focus on in coming years, and you can see homelessness, the financial sustainability of the city, maintaining community character, affordable housing, and the cleanliness and attractiveness of public spaces. As far as where the respondents felt that the city needed to address the most infrastructure needs, road conditions and improvements to our streets, storm drains and flood mitigation, harbor and waterfront infrastructure, our water supply system, and sewer line replacements. And as far as the open-ended questions, things, so we received a lot of responses, written responses to the things that you most like about living and working in Morro Bay. I had to sort of characterize them into these. So this is my characterization of what most of the comments related to. So what you like most, climate, weather, natural setting, physical setting of the city, small-town character and charm, the community members and their neighbors. And then, again, categorizing the open-ended question responses to, there, people were asked, two most important things for the city to focus on now. Addressing the power plant reuse and the battery storage plant potential project, homelessness, road conditions and traffic, maintaining the small-town character of the city, and addressing the city's financial situation. We also spoke to the city's advisory boards. Some of them provided very detailed group responses to the question about what the city strategic plan should focus on. In other cases, we had the members address, fill out the survey and respond with the rest of the citizens. The planning commission provided, discussed the matter, I think, in detail and provided fairly detailed responses. They would like the city to look into adopting historic preservation ordinance, focus on downtown design guidelines, addressing the, again, the Vistra property, the power plant property and their master plan, and explore various policies, initiatives in order to support the existing housing goal and the housing element of the general plan. The Harbor Advisory Board suggested that the council focus on harbor infrastructure, revenue sources in the harbor, public facilities, and parking leaseholder relations. The Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, Public Works and Rec and Park Commission, their members were asked to fill out the citizen survey. As far as the Chamber of Commerce, they provided a very detailed response with a number of suggested tasks under these four major headings: sanitation, maintenance and beautification of the community, increasing housing, improving infrastructure, and improving circulation. Next steps in this process, next Wednesday, we are going to be meeting at 5:30. Next steps in this process, next Wednesday, we are going to be meeting at 5:30 p.m., hopefully in the Veterans Hall, right? If our electrical issues are resolved, to work, to take a look at the previous strategic plan goals and discuss those, and then to start to develop objectives to accomplish what council feels should be the goals for the upcoming years. Council will then be asked to formally review and adopt goals and action items at your meeting on April eleventh. This all feeds into the resources, right? What goals do we select? What actions do we think we should undertake? And then, through the budget process, how much, how many dollars do we have to address these things? How long can that list be? What are our capacity constraints? So, you'll be, you'll be making those decisions for which of these areas to pursue with financial resources during your budget process, which starts in May, concludes in June. And then, once we have an adopted strategic plan and action items, the intent would be that we do quarterly updates to the, to the community and to the city council with the status of our progress in completing the action items. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much for that very thorough presentation. I was always looking for the good in it all, so I was happy to see some of those comments that were made online that had ninety percent or better approval rating, and it was nice to see that, I think we always circle back to our quality of life here and focus on that as our strongest point, and kudos for the emergency response in Morro Bay. I mean, that was just unbelievable. So, high marks for those. Questions for staff? Councilmember Burton, any questions?
Nothing I can think of.
Councilmember Ford, any questions? Councilmember Landrum or Edwards, whichever one, if you have any questions?
I'm good. I'm good. I would just like to thank Mr. Carpenter for that presentation. It was really appreciated.
Thank you. With that, I will open public comment for Item C two.
Now you know why I sit right in the front row. Terry Simons, Morro Bay. I thought that was an excellent presentation. I've been following this whole development of new goals and action items through the Planning Commission, and I watched their deliberation on it, and I thought it was quite thorough. Unfortunately, I can't get around to all the different committees and see their particular deliberations, but I think that people are taking this seriously. And looking at staff report, I was glad to see that the presenter gave us a time and a location, which was lacking in what I had in the agenda, and also some future of where this is going. I'm curious as to what the format on the April fifth meeting will be. Will there be an opportunity for public comment at that time to augment any other public issues as to goals and objectives, or should I do that now? Thank you. I wasn't prepared to do it now.
Thank you.
It's true. Betty Winholz, I want to get a little jump on the goal setting because I want to take a different perspective. This is from a resident's perspective. This is what we see from the ground rather than the offices of City Hall, and my intent is that we get back to basics. I think five goals is too many. I think our staff already has so much to do just on the daily basis of their projects, and that's not been acknowledged in the goals. I'm assuming the goals are above and beyond the daily basics that they perform, so that's going to be my assumption here. So, I only have three goals down from five. I only have seventeen action items and not thirty-some. So, I'll briefly go through this. The first one's public infrastructure, which everyone agrees on, that streets have to be taken care of. We need to spend that minimum two million dollars that our consultant said last year or earlier this year, last year, per year, if we're going to even maintain the low quality that we have. I don't believe, and I said this the other night, we don't need a consultant telling us what's wrong. We know what's wrong, and if we don't, then the staff needs to be out there on the street looking at it. I think the bike paths need to be fixed and not just the one that's been ruined by the sewer plant, but the ones out at Cloisters needs to be repaved. I think we need to look at those things. Coleman Park area, I think you need to listen to the public, that we don't want that to be a fancy place, and that needs to be relooked at. I don't know if this is stepping out of line, but that surcharge needs to look at it. Do we need a forensic audit of the money that we spent on the WRF since we went from one-hundred-and-twenty-six to one-hundred-and-sixty million dollars, and we're not done? And that certainly, Mr. Matthews told us last night, we have got to do something about the Vets Hall. And so, those are just very basic things that we as residents see need to be done. And then, in the planning department, the whole idea of the downtown, and that was reiterated, it sounds like, by the Planning Commission, the community is anxious for your study session that you said we could have on the best project in the wind farm. I think you've also heard from the public that we want to address here in our community, not through the county, unhoused needs. Safe parking, a warming station, you have to, you need to look at that. And if you hear talk on the street, people are still talking about vacation rentals, I would love to have a status report on that. Is it being enforced? Have people paid their fees? What's going on with that? And then, my third one is the institutional organization, and these are maybe personal things that I feel about that we need to bring back and quit outsourcing. And the things that we've outsourced, either bring those back or tell us why it's cheap or not to. I think we need to restore our parks overhead and supervision back to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Get that off Public Works, thank you, Public Works Agenda, they've got too much to deal with anyways. And then, I would also, I've added kind of at the bottom as I've listened through the meeting tonight, I think our reserves do not need to be at fifty percent. I'd like for you to look at reducing that, and please do something about our website. It really is not user-friendly. Thank you.
AGP, do we have anyone in the queue? Nobody's hands, thank you. With that, I will bring it back to council, and I think that we all have plenty of opportunities next week to address many of these items. And the answer to that, Mr. Carpenter, would be yes, there will be full engagement from the residents, community, citizens.
I think you would normally have certainly public comment at the beginning of the meeting. It's up to the council how you want to design that.
Thank you. Any final comments from council members?
I'm just looking forward to the fifth. I think it'll be a great, a great session, and I also look forward to hearing additional public comment as well, so.
It's been nice to have the list of all the comments to go from and then to balance that out with the plans from last time and where we are. It gives you a pretty full picture, but it'll be interesting to see, you know, it's another year, it's different, we had different kind of weather challenges and that sort of thing. It'll be interesting to see what else comes out, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum? Comments?
No comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Carpenter for that streamlined analysis of all the information we got from that survey. It was, there was a lot of common ground and commonalities that I saw in that survey, things that we all think about and all are concerned about and all want to do better. So, I am definitely looking forward to next week.
Thank you. And I would encourage anyone out there listening in the community to, is the survey still up?
I believe it's up until Friday.
Until Friday, to go to the city website and participate in that survey, and also reach out to the council members with any things you want to add for goals and want us to address and look at. I think that having three new council members along with the two here, I know that a lot of the changes will come just because we, I think, a lot of the goals and the time that they were set was still during some COVID challenges, so there's definitely a lot of changes now. This is a receiving file. I look forward to seeing everyone next week for that. With that, we will move to council declaration of future agenda items. Anyone? Councilmember Edwards or Landrum?
Nothing for me.
I don't have anything.
Well, I do. I'll make a quick one item. I'm going to ask for council support, and I will try and keep this as brief as I can without going into too much detail, but what I'd like to ask is that we, you would support me in asking for a resolution to come back to city council that would ask for a few of the following. This would be intended to be directed towards our legislatures at the state and federal level, asking for notification for any local, regional, state meetings, bills, or pending changes regarding offshore wind energy in the area outside of Morro Bay. And the reason I want to request a resolution is so that we can make sure they understand we want to continue to have a seat at the table and to be informed of any bills, action items, or anything for our area, be included in the meeting discussions regarding offshore wind energy, and making sure that we have representation of stakeholders at the table. So, and I'd also like to, as we send those things, include, have permission from council with your approval. This would come back at our meeting and also include a letter from the mayor to our legislatures, just wanting to make sure they realize we still want to be engaged. So, I'm looking for support for bringing that back, and I will work with staff some on the language for that resolution if I have support. Anyone?
I second that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, thank you. Good. I know, you can't, you can't, you have to stay out of it, okay? You don't have to, but yeah, thank you. And Councilmember Edwards, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so I will get with Mr. Carpenter and work on bringing that back hopefully as soon as possible so we can make sure that we can get that information shared with our representatives, also our lobbyist, who's going to be here at our next meeting, so thank you. If there is no other items, I will move for adjournment, and thank you, everybody, for your patience the last two nights. Hopefully, we'll be back on track, and also thank you, staff, for two nights of your time, too. Thank you. Appreciate it.